Item number three, again Mr. Renssberg.
All right, I promise this is the last time this evening. All right, the next request, if I can get here, is from AWM Property Management. This company has requested that 4.88 acres that it owns or has recently purchased at 28999 NC 2427 highway in Albemarle be rezoned from RA Residential Agricultural to HB Highway Business. Property is currently zoned RA. The lots immediately surrounded property are generally zoned RA, which includes the Aggreg Civic Center property, which of course is owned by the county. Areas nearby are zoned NB Neighborhood Business and GB General Business. The GB lot on the south side, and I'll go to this, kind of dangling across from the Aggreg Civic Center was zoned, rezoned by the county commissioners last, let's see, when was that, last January, I believe. Early 2018, for vehicle body repair shop, still not constructed, but that's the zoning for that parcel that's in red on this map. Another lot zoned RA across the south side of NC 2427 is owned by Harvest Church for future development of a church at that location. Property currently has two homes in very poor condition, which according to AWM Property Management are to be removed as they work to market that site. They do not have a current, to my knowledge anyway, anyone currently, or any plans currently for that site. HB District does, of course, serve for general highway business traveler needs, and they're generally located just on the outskirts of towns. Attorney General Jim Phillips representing AWM Property indicated that there were no plans at this point. Again, same transportation data basically, because we're not too far from Frog Pond with this. Twenty seventeen data reveals about sixteen thousand vehicles per day traverse this section of the highway. And just like most things along 2427 corridor, it is in the Stanley County Land Use Plan as a growth area. Mr. Keith Parsley, I'm not sure if he's here tonight, but he did express some concern. He's located on the property adjacent just to the east of this parcel and was concerned, of course, about the buffering between and potentially the value that may affect his property by being right next to a commercially zoned parcel. Of course, that could have a positive or a negative effect, and the planning board worked to try to explain that to him. The board, in their consideration last month, ended up voting five to one to recommend approval of this request to rezone based on it being in a growth area in the land use plan and near other areas that are zoned for business or owned by the church and, of course, being adjacent to the Aggreg Civic Center and not far from the community college. Ms. Brazington was, the dissenting vote, her concern was the effect on Mr. Parsley and the impact it may have on his property and further encroachment on the neighborhood, which is near Tom Thumb Road.
Thank you, Mr. Renssberg. Any questions from the board?
And I did not show you the aerial view, but it is mostly a wooded lot with those, what remains of those two houses on the lot. And it's actually two lots, but it's all joined together. But there's a larger view if you want us to see that for the zoning.
Thank you. I have one question before you sneak away. The drawings we have in our book don't have these pink or purple, I'm not good with colors, sorry.
Okay.
Dashed lines?
Oh, sure.
What are those?
What are those things?
One intersects that property line at the back there.
Sure, great, great question. If you, on GIS, if you click the button that says Lot Lines, you're going to get these dashed lines. And what they generally are is where, at one point, the property was divided. Or, as many cases, like if you look back there on Scaly Bark, you see these evenly dashed lines every fifty feet or so. Especially back in the, a quick explanation, back in the nineteen forties, thirties, fifties, that time period, what they tended to do when they created a subdivision was to create small sections of lots, and you could buy as many as you could afford. And that's where they put the final line. But if you see these, you can go all around the county and you'll say, well, even the bottom right of this map, you can see all these little dashed lines. And it was just the opportunity for the developer to say, well, if you can buy twenty-five more feet, you can come this far, and twenty-five more, and so your lot could be increased. It's kind of a residual thing from the past, but it shows old lot lines, or if something's been subdivided and then recombined or something, that dashed line will remain.
Thank you, Mr. Renssberg.
Good question.
Mr. Renssberg.
Yes, sir.
What did you said at the property management office?
It would be HB Highway Business.
You know what's going to be there?
There's no planned use that I'm aware of. I know Mr. Phillips is here, he may be able to address that, but I'm, yeah, I'm not aware. Right, right. Because, of course, by zoning standards, anything that's HB would be allowed that's in that zoning district.
Any other questions from Commissioner? I declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I'll be brief. It's my understanding that this property is owned by AWM Property Management LLC, which is a North Carolina limited liability company that has a business office in Oakboro. One of the principals is Mr. Anthony Wayne Marks. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, and he's asked if I would step up and inform the commissioners as follows. One is, as you've heard, there's no immediate plan to what this property is going to be used for, except as follows. It's my understanding that the buildings on there are in a very, very dilapidated condition, and they need to be taken down, and the site needs to be cleaned up, so it would be suitable for some purpose down the road. And Mr. Marks has informed me that that's something that is on, early on, his calendar, and that should it be rezoned, he would like to do that. There are no plans or clandestine purposes for this. There's no offer to purchase in contract with any third party. There's no written agreement or oral agreement. I know I'd sell this to any particular person or entity at this time. It's something that he just hopes to market. And so, a great question would be what's going to be on that property, and other than being cleaned up, I unfortunately don't have an answer to that. It's my understanding, too, that when this property was purchased by this particular LLC, that it was in two parcels or two different deed descriptions, and there was a new survey, and I presented that to the planning director over at the planning board meeting, and it shows it basically as a one track or parcel. And I've not been informed that there's any desire at this time to subdivide it or try to break it down into any subparts. Also, I would say, I would think the county would be very, very familiar with this property because on two sides, I believe the property is actually owned or in the lawful possession of Stanley County. So, you certainly would have a great deal of familiarity with it. And the last thing I would say about this is that Mr. Marks is a person who owns numerous properties here in Stanley County through some companies, and also has projects in other places. And I'm sure you've heard this before, that he can do more profitable projects in other areas, but he wants to do something for his home county. And I hope that whatever the property is utilized for would be something that would A) increase the tax base, B) attract it to the county, and B) something that might be coordinated with the Aggreg Civic Center use, and bring economic opportunity. But since he doesn't have a definite plan as to what that particular future use is, I don't, I don't have anything to add to that. But he does seem very serious about trying to find a reputable person to use this property for a productive purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Anybody else to speak for or against?
Thank you.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any other questions from Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question.
Lawhan.
If we approve this for general business, and this is for Mr. Renssberg, the property lines that are attached to other property owners, isn't there a requirement for a privacy fence, six-foot privacy fence, if we so desire as a property owner?
Correct. So, yeah, the zoning ordinance requires a ten-foot vegetated buffer between a commercial, any commercial property and any residential property. It could be replaced with a substantial fence that you can't see for, so it's an opaque fence situation, of X number of height, depending on how far back on the lot you are. But yes, there would be a buffer or a break between the two. It can be waived. There's a part in the ordinance that allows that adjoining landowners says, I don't care, I don't want it, I'll write a letter to the owner, basically establishing that we don't need a buffer. If we find, I don't care, then what, if they send that letter or establish that agreement, then the buffer's not applied. Good question.
Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Fur.
I would like, what is, can we, what is some of the [inaudible]?
Well, I don't know that one book out totally, but it's, it's a long list. If you picture, I mean, obviously, convenience store, hotel motel type situation, I'm going to, I'm going to get to section 608 or something. I'm getting there, here we go. Animal hospital, assembly halls, parking lots, parts and, automobile parts and supplies, automobile rental, automobile sales and display lots, washing establishments, banks, bar beauty shops, and it's a long list. Greenhouses, motels and motor lodges, nursery schools, kindergartens, recreational facilities, restaurants, mini storage warehouses, that sort of thing.
Any questions? You can call out if you want.
Of course, I will admit, as, from the planning department's side, you'd really like to see a hotel or motel there, or some sort of conference center, but that's, but...
That's what I was wondering, if it was talking to a light gas station or something that you don't have?
It could. I mean, that's the other catch, because this is general rezoning, so it could be any of those things. You know, we don't, we aren't going to specify that or restrict what AWM Property Management could do with this, but, but yes, hotel was certainly a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Renssberg. Any further questions from the Commissioners? It was the pleasure of the board. Motion by Commissioner Fur.
Stanley County East, located here in the city center, for emergency use. You can all put the bell for our account.
Thank you, Commissioner Fur. Motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Item number four is the WK Dixon Design Service Contract for the wastewater treatment plant. Presenter, Mr. Wingo.
Thank you, gentlemen. Good evening. WK Dixon has submitted amendment number two to the existing design services contract for our West Stanley wastewater treatment plant upgrade. This amendment is for additional design services to increase the wastewater treatment plant capacity to 1.2 million gallons per day. Because of excessive flows at the wastewater treatment plant due to inflow and infiltration, NCDQ has increased the design peaking factors in the design from 2.5 to 3.6. This increase in the peaking factor has required us to do additional design services, or required additional design services, to increase the chlorine contact tank, effluent pumps, and headworks to achieve a new rated treatment capacity of 1.2 million gallons per day. The total amount of the additional design services is $95,000. Staff recommends approval of the WK Dixon Amendment Number Two Design Services Contract. Upon bidding the projects, or the project, Stanley County will seek additional funding through NCDQ SRF to finance the total cost of design and construction. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commissioners? Not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Morgan.
I move that we approve WK Dixon Amendment Number Two Design Services Contract.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Barbie. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is the radio tower design build contract. Presenter, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the members of the board. County elected to utilize the design build method of delivery for the construction of a new emergency communications systems radio tower on NC 2427 East behind what will be the new East Side Volunteer Fire Department. We're still working to get that legally possessed in our name, that piece of property, but we're close. The county received four responses to the request for qualifications. Those came from Motorola, Infineasy, Allstate Tower, and tower engineering professionals. Upon review, staff recommends utilizing Motorola as a design build contractor for the project. The recommendation is based on the following factors. Motorola has already designed and developed a construction cost estimate for the project, and this will save significant time towards construction, and we want to move this project along. Obviously, the longer it takes, the longer we're in a situation where we do have gaps in radio coverage in the eastern part of our county. Consistency and compatibility with the county's existing towers and digital system, obviously that's a real imperative that we get that right, because it's such an integral link between the 911 center, our first responders on the ground, and we want to make sure that there's compatibility between this tower and the electrical and electronics and our other towers. And then the experience working with our county inspections and emergency management personnel, given their, that they were the ones who provided the, or constructed the towers and the three towers that we built, as well as integrating the fourth Viper Tower at the community college. So with those three factors in mind, staff is asking the board to review and consider approval of Motorola as a design build contractor, and authorize staff to enter into a contract as in the best interest of the county.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Are there any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Mr. Lucas, looking at the property, if you're facing the property from 2427, where will that tower be located on that?
It will be, if you're looking at that property, it'll be in the back left-hand corner. There's a, there's a knoll there that sits up. If you recall, we actually had money in the budget this year to help with the site prep. We're currently close to bidding that site prep, so we'll be taking a road off the backside of where East Side's parking lot will be, and that road will go up to the tower site. And those are always just gravel roads. And then, so in this year's budget, we have funds that will allow us to grade that road, gravel it, and then prep the site. Then Motorola will come in and build the, build the tower, do the footings, and construct it, and hook on the electronics. So that site sits back in the left-hand corner of that, up on a knoll. We did soil testing as part of the thing, so what we didn't want to do is take a piece of land, and then we find out that it's not, it's not great, it wasn't a great site, or we hit rock, or whatever, and it increased the cost. So, we felt like if we did those soil tests ahead of time, we would be able to narrow down the specific piece of acreage we wanted, and that would also help Motorola, or whoever we use to do the construction of this, be able to give us a better cost estimate for the construction of the tower. And that's proven to be, to be the case.
One other question. I've never been to one of these tower sites. I think I've seen them as I'm driving through Stanley County, but are these sites fenced in to where nobody can get in there unless they have key access?
Yes, there's key access. The one at Tucker Town, obviously, you have to actually get in the gate for the wastewater treatment plant first, and then, you know, you go, then you have to get there. So that one's locked right there at the street. The one in Norwood, there's a, there's an actual physical gate that you have to open up, and then there's a fenced-in compound around the tower site that you have to have a key in order to access. The one in Locust, you can drive in on the road, there's, I think there's a chain fence there, but you can drive in, but then again, there's a fenced-in compound around the tower site itself, and the same thing at the Viper site at the community college. So this will be the same way. You'll be able to get to, you'll be able to drive back there, but you're not going to be able to get into the tower site. It'll have a, it's at least an eight-foot fence around, around it with Constantine wire at the top to keep folks out of that, out of that tower site. And, you know, we have a maintenance contract, so the folks come and visit those sites on a monthly basis to make sure everything's working properly, they test the generators, all those things are happening on a consistent basis, and we contract for that on an annual basis.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Lucas. Do we have a bid yet on construction of this?
It's a design build, so they will give us a, they will, we pick, we pick the design, the contractor, and then they give us a bid, similar to what we do with EMS base, you know, we picked DR Reynolds, and DR Reynolds is still working on that cost estimate. Motorola is pretty close to finalizing their cost estimate. It's my intention to use fund balance, so we don't have to borrow the money. I believe it's going to be in the neighborhood of 1.16 million to do this tower. That's turnkey, everything, including the design services, the whole works. So, at some point in the next month or two, we'll be coming back to you with a project budget to do a budget amendment and recognize those funds out of fund balance, and then that will move forward with constructing that tower.
I was just wondering how we picked out the four, whether you have a bid or anything?
No, we didn't do, these aren't actual bids, they're based on qualifications, and so it's a design build, so that whoever we pick as the general contractor to build it, they come up with the, they, they work to develop a cost estimate, and then we negotiate around that cost in terms of how do we, you know, bring that into a number that we can live with. And then anytime there's savings in those design build contracts, they put a number on a not succeed, and if there's any savings they share, we share that savings on those contracts.
I just have one question. Do we have any idea, like, once the site is graded, how long it takes for the construction of the tower?
Yes, if my recollection serves me, once the site was graded, and in this case Motorola goes out to build these towers, I want to say somewhere in the three-to-six month timeframe to, for the tower to go vertical and the electronics to be put on it and all the testing to occur.
Any other questions?
A lot of that will depend on how quickly they can order steel and all that kind of stuff.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lawhan.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Motorola as the design build contractor for the county's new radio tower, and authorize staff to enter into a contract that is in the best interest of the county.
Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Item number six is the recommended budget presentation this evening. We'll give County Manager Lucas just a few minutes to set up.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 1920. And before I get started, I just want to say thank you to all the staff that were involved in the development of this budget. This process actually started back in March at your board retreat, actually started before that, as staff was developing revenue targets and other things to be able to present to you at that retreat, to help you get a better understanding of where we might be from a forecasting perspective as we entered into this budget year. And so, a lot of department head interaction, Toby, our finance director, and Melissa Effer, Emily in HR, just, there, a tremendous amount of work goes into not only developing recommendation, but all the documents that go along with this, and all the data that has to be entered into a system to make this work. So I just want to thank them for all their hard work. Just an overview of what's in your book that you have this evening, and these books are also be at each of the libraries, as well as there's a copy here at the Commissioner's, at the central office, if folks want to come by and see it, or if someone wanted to get a copy. It's also online, they can go out online and get it, it'll be online tomorrow morning. But if someone wanted to see a physical copy, it's, it's, it will be in each of the branches of the library. But you'll see a recommended budget in brief, it's sort of the first two pages, it sort of just gives you a real high-level summary of your, your goals, your strategies, your vision, and just some, just general information about the highlights of the budget. Then there's a transmittal letter that's about ten or twelve pages long, that gives you a lot of nuts and bolts about recommendations that were made in the budget, our revenues, expenses, position requests, positions that were funded, capital requests, recommendations in terms of what's recommended on those capital requests, both capital improvement and technology, education, it goes into a lot of detail. Then there's a couple spreadsheets, one just sort of, sort of shows you the recommended numbers by each department as compared to the adopted budget last year. Another one shows you something similar, but it also shows you the revenue, so you understand how many county dollars are actually in those different programs and services. For example, inspections. Inspections doesn't require any property tax revenue, because the fees that they gather cover the cost of that service. Register of deeds. Register of deeds costs very limited county dollars, actually sales tax or property tax, because most of the fees they collect cover the cost of that. It's not 100% covered by fees that they collect, but it's close. And so you kind of get a better sense of what, what services are costing the county taxpayers, what's 100% versus some percentage thereof. You'll also see a property tax receipt in there. Basically, that shows you as a homeowner of the, of a, just sort of on average, the average home in Stanley County, what their property, how their property tax is broken out on a monthly basis. So if the, I believe it was about thirteen, almost $1,400 a year in taxes, you can see on a monthly basis how that $1,400 is being allocated to the different programs and services the county funds. So it really gives the taxpayer a better idea when they say to you, how is my money being utilized? You can then, you can basically be able to show them, here's a property tax receipt. And we include this in our recommended budget as well as our adopted budget, so the public has a better understanding of where their money's going. And then there's also, they'll see, and the next thing we'll see is a spreadsheet that contains the department head requested and the manager recommended enhancements. So these are all the things that departments ask for above and beyond what they had in this year's budget. And so you can kind of get a gentle sense of new positions, more money for computers, more money for maintenance, more money for whatever it may be, uniforms, you can, you name it, they're in there by department, and you can see those enhancements and what they requested and what was recommended. I want to say that the enhancements were like four-point-something million, and we've recommended about 1.6 of that. And so, you can kind of get a sense of what departments are asking for. Then there's some line item revenue and expense by each department, and you'll see those for every single department that the county has in program and service. And then there's a recommended fee schedule. And in that recommended fee schedule, we've taken the time to highlight in yellow those fees that were, where a department has requested a change in fee, in most instances, an increase, and the manager has recommended that same fee increase. Then there's also fees that are highlighted in green. Those are fees that I have, as manager in the manner of recommended budget, I may have differed from what the department had asked for. I may have given them slightly lower than what they asked for, or I may have given them something different. them something different than what they asked for. But, so the yellows reflect where a department has asked for a fee increase or decrease, and the manager's recommended, recommendation matches that department head's request. Green is, there is a change from the previous year, but it may not necessarily match what the department head's request. So, that's sort of an overview of what you'll find in your, in your budget book. The bottom line is, there's no recommended tax increase. This would be the 13th consecutive year that the board has held the tax rate at 67 cents if the board adopts this budget without a tax increase or increasing it from 67 cents. There are significant increases in education funding in this budget. There's increased public safety funding for personnel and vehicles. There's several capital outlay and technology enhancements in this budget, and there are additional resources to retain and attract talent for our local government, because it's imperative that we have good people working for us. That helps to make sure that we're being innovative, helps to make sure we're having outstanding customer service, so your phone does not ring as often about issues or concerns that people may see from their local government and their interaction with us. If you look at what was requested versus what was recommended, that's a difference of $10.95 million. That's 22 cents on the, on the current recommended tax rate of 67 cents. So, if you were to fund everything that was requested in this budget, you would have to raise taxes 22 cents. That's, that's the reality of what we're trying to balance here. You know, and then folks have said, well, you know, maybe even a five-cent tax increase. You know, five cents would generally generate about $2.4 million. So, you know, I've heard folks say, well, we need an extra $2 million for this service or that service. Well, an extra $2 million is raising taxes 5 cents. And so, for the average homeowner, that, you know, average home being about $175,000, you know, that's only $88 a year. And that sounds simple, you know, for folks like myself who are blessed, have good job, have stability, $88 is not a whole lot. But we have so many folks in our, in our population that are on fixed income. And it really, I was visiting my elderly parents this weekend, and it sort of drove home, and they're very blessed to have retirement and pensions, but not everybody, they were telling, telling me, not everybody they interact with is in that same situation. And we have that same, same issue here in Stanley County, where we have an aging population, and folks are getting older, and we have, you know, rising property tax, property values around some of these folks who have owned their homes for a number of years. So, you know, inherently, their values are going up. And so, yeah, a tax increase for some of us is, we could, we could, we could bear that burden, but unfortunately, that's not, you know, it's not, that's not a reality for a lot of folks who live in our community. And then the other piece of that is, you know, we're looking at a project, an economic development, Project Blue Sky. If you, if you were to raise taxes 5 cents, that, that company would pay an additional $170,000 in a year in taxes if you raised taxes 5 cents. So, I think that's the other thing you really have to look at, is one of our advantages we have right now over other counties in our region is the fact that our tax rate is, and our tax burden is relatively low. We have one of the lower tax burdens and lower tax rates in our region. So, it's imperative that we maintain that, that economic advantage. And so, by raising taxes, yes, it sounds easy, but it really has a burden. It places a burden on businesses, and it places a burden on our elderly, as well as our agricultural operations who are being stretched, especially in this, you know, where we had so much rain, and we've had, you know, just, it's not a great economy. Commodity prices for corn and other things are not great right now, and so, you know, you're putting an extra burden on those agricultural operations as the more you tax their land. So, I think it's imperative that you really look at and strike a balance when folks say, hey, we could just raise taxes a couple cents. It's not, I think the, you really need to look at the choices and consequences associated with that. But you can see here, you know, what was, what was recommended versus what was requested. And I, Chairman, or Commissioner Jordan, I'll be more than happy to, if you want to hold that question, I'll, I'll answer them all at the end, just so that we can get through the presentation. Just sort of gives you a multi-year illustration of our budget. Certainly, it's gone up. You know, you can kind of see, coming out of a recession in, back in 11, 12, we have grown as revenues have increased. We, you know, the budget has increased. That $67.6 million, that's a 5% increase over last year, which sounds fairly, seems high, but if you take out the Article 46 sales tax, that additional quarter cent sales tax that was approved by the voters, then the increase is only 2.6%. CPI was about 1.95, so it's not significantly more than what the Consumer Price Index was. If you back out that quarter cent sales tax that the voters voted in, and, you know, that money is included in this budget. It's about 46.7 million in county dollars, so if you subtract out the revenue that we'll get from other sources, other than property taxes and sales tax, the $4.96 billion in assessed value, that's $122 million increase in assessed value, 2.8%. Fund balance appropriation recommended is 1.74 million. 1.17 million of that, 68%, is tied to one-time capital outlay and technology purchases, including one-time capital outlay recommendations for the Stanley County school system. And that 67%, 68%, pretty much it's been standard for us in terms of the amount of fund balance that's tied to one-time capital. And we've tried to do that purposely, because, you know, you don't want to necessarily live on balancing your budget with fund balance. So, if you're going to do it, try to tie as much of that as to one-time capital items or one-time items, so that if you, the filing here, if he wasn't there, you can back those things out, and they're not, they're not helping to fund operations. In terms of education, recommending a $1 million increase to the regular current expense line item in the school's budget. $500,000 for the special current expense, and that's the Article 44 sales tax, that's different than the 46, which is the quarter cent. Article 44 is a, as a state, that, a sales tax that was approved by the state and trickles down to the counties, and it has to be used for economic development or education. And so, we use part of it, it's, we're recommending, I think we're, we're looking at $670,000 from that sales tax this year. $500,000 is recommended for the schools. The other $170,000, 110 of it is tied to the Riverstone debt service payment, which we have two more years of, and then the remaining $60,000 is recommended to offset our grants for business and industry, for investments they have made. If they invest and they meet their, meet their targets, then we provide them a grant for a certain percentage of their taxes, and so that $60,000 is going to help offset that cost to us. Recommending an additional $25,000 for the teacher supplement grant, which would boast that up to $314,000, and $620,000 in additional capital outlay. And so, I feel like that's, you know, we, we're, we've given us a significant increase in funding to education. It's certainly nowhere near the conversation we had with the school board and what they, with some of the school board members, since they didn't official, I don't believe they really officially took action, but what they told us to, to put in the requested budget, it's not there, certainly is not anywhere close, but I do believe it's sustainable, and we, it's something that we can move forward with, and we can, we can work with them and try to incrementally increase it year to year. But this is a substantial increase in funding for the school system from where they are today. And then 40% increase in current expense and operating, a half-million dollars for the community college. And that really is to help them with some one-time things on, on their campus this year, deferred maintenance and other things that they're planning on, and then sort of as a placeholder, so as we move forward with the discussion we had about a new building, that that $500,000 could be used to offset that debt service moving into the 2021 fiscal year and beyond. Where's the money go? And so, you can kind of see the categories. $84 million, or 84% of the county funding goes to mandated services, you know, and we, so I know you all hear a lot of times, why do we fund this, or why do you have to fund that? 84% of the dollars you have go to stuff that we have to fund. And so, that's 56.8 million, that's jail, debt, DSS, EMS, sheriff, education. So, you know, you don't have a whole lot of flexibility at 16% of your budget that you have any discretion over in terms of how you fund. 76% of your funding goes to three categories: education, healthy human services, and public safety. So, 3/4 of your budget's going to those three categories of, of services. And 38% of your local dollars, 38% of your sales tax and property tax money that our citizens invest in our local government, 38% of that, almost 4 and 10, is going to education. So, human capital, recommending a 2.5% of COLA for our employees, that would be effective July 1st. A $50,000 increase for merit funding that we do in January of each year, and that's based on performance evaluations and, and making sure there's a satisfactory performance evaluation before you get that increase. I am recommending six new full-time positions, and two part-time positions are recommended, continuing in the wellness clinic for our employees, as well as continuing the health insurance gain-sharing plan that we have in place. The six new positions, one of those, three of those are in social services, child nutrition, and a Medicaid services worker, as well as a child protective services. One position is for the sheriff's office and for sexual offender monitoring. I feel like we need to do a better job. There's a lot of registered sex offenders in Stanley County, and there's a lot of registers like that in all the counties around us, but we don't really have a dedicated resources to making sure that we're going around and checking on those sex offenders. I think it's imperative to protect our children, that we have a deputy that's specifically assigned to make filing up on those registered sex offenders. And in a lot of respects, it become, it kind of creates a community policing model, too, because that person's going to be in, in neighborhoods knocking on doors, and you're going to see that presence. So, I think it, it serves two purposes. There's also a full-time fire inspector that I'm recommending, and that's partly because of the increase in volume of permits and building that's going on, and to help offset the cost of that, we're reducing, they have three part-time employees now, we would reduce that by one, so that we'd lose a part-time employee but gain a full-time employee. And so, major budgetary expenditure changes, they increase, you can see the increase for schools and schools' capital outlay, and the community college, the, the cost for the COLA, the cost for health insurance premiums, to maintain health insurance premiums for county employees, at no cost for those premiums. There is a cost for dependent care. If, you know, if you don't, if we don't increase the dependent care, though, the cost to the, to the county is going to go up. And so, it's imperative that we take a look at that and make sure that the, those that do choose to cover dependents, that they're paying their, their fair share. There's also, the state has retired, mandated an increase in the North Carolina local government retirement system. So, the county has to match a certain percentage of every employee's salary that goes into the retirement system for that defined benefit pension that, that we receive. And so, because the, there's a baby boomers, and we have so many folks retiring, it's putting more strain on the retirement system, and so the state has said, you need to, you need to increase your match. That cost to us is going to be $367,000 next year. We needed to increase for overtime for EMS, because we underfunded that in 18, 19. Increases for annualized merit from when we did it in January, so that was only half a year, and then the reduction in one-time capital outlay and technology from 18, 19. So, we've reduced those items and then put that money to work somewhere else in the budget. And you can kind of see capital outlay, those items in technology, those items that were $1,000 to $9,999. There were $52,000 in requests, we're recommending $31,000. And then those things, $10,000 and greater, there were 1.7, almost 1.78 million in requested and recommending 1.5. Keep in mind, two of those are large items, sheriff's office vehicle replacement and EMS, two EMS, two EMS ambulance replacements. We won't see the cost of that in the 1920 budget. We will, we will finance those, and then those, that initial debt service payment will come on in the 2021 budget, but that will also allow additional debt service that we have for sheriff vehicles to roll off, as well as EMS ambulances' costs to roll off. So, we're, we're, I'm recommending, it's part of that 1.5, but you actually won't pay any of that, those dollars in this fiscal year. We'll finance them, purchase them, and that first debt service payment will be in July, August, or September of 2020. So, it won't have an impact on this year's budget. Just a revenue summary, the fund balance appropriated, I'm recommending a decrease. Again, I think it's imperative we continue to try to bring down how much fund balance we're using to balance our budget. This year, we're, we're down about, I think we were at 2.1, 2.2 last year, recommended about 1.7, so we're trying to, trying to bring that down. Sales tax is up, obviously, with the additional 1.5. We, we, we're looking at about 1.525 million that we, that we anticipate from the sales tax, that additional quarter cent sales tax. That's a lot of that 2.2% increase, or 2.2 percentage point increase. And then the ad valorem property tax decreased by 1.3 percentage points, partly because you've got more sales tax coming in, which means you don't, you don't need as many property tax dollars. And so, ad valorem tax, sales tax, intergovernmental revenue, which is money that we get to, for cost in senior services, DSS, health department, that and sales and services fees make up 93% of our total revenue. Outside agency requests, we only had one, and that's really, it's a mandated statutory allocation to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. They had 50,000 in funding last year, they requested 50,000 in funding this year, I'm recommending 25. That additional 25 was set aside for tourism grants, so if, if folks had a, had a, had a tourism-related event that was going to put a certain number of heads in beds, people in hotel rooms, we have a, we have a, a grant that if they hit certain benchmarks, we will give them a grant. And this year, we set aside $25,000, but we're not using that full 25,000. We used $10,000 for that, the outdoor, the fish, the fish tournament. And so, there's funding that's still there and sitting there that we can use for next year if there's a, a project that comes along that would meet those qualifications. So, I feel comfortable just appropriating the 25,000 and using what's left from this year to assist in those projects next year. Recommended fee changes, I am recommending that the, that we increase the household solid waste fee from by $5 to $85, and that just really is associated with the cost of hauling, capital items to keep those containers and those compactors running, and having to replace those compactors at each of those sites, and then just the fact that with employee COLAs and employee merit, the cost of our, our, our human capital's gone up. And so, we're recommending that $5 increase to make it 80, to make it $85. I still believe that's a significant bargain, that for $85 a year, you get to take your trash to the convenience sites, you know, as many times a, a week as you need to, as long as they're open. And there's several other fee recommendations in the budget, and like I said, it's in the back part of your book, and those are highlighted in yellow or green, depending on whether it was, my recommendation is consistent with department heads, or my recommendation's different. The other thing that you will, we will, you will notice in the senior services budget, we currently rent the, the large room at the senior center, and we're recommending that we discontinue that. We will, I am recommending that we continue to let departments or agencies that are connected to the county, or one of our strategic partners, like the school system, if they had a PTO or a booster, you know, want to have a booster vent, because it's a school system, because it's counted, connected to the county, that we would still let those folks use that facility and do similar to what we do with the commons, where they do it for the cleaning fee. But just to generally open it up to the general public, they're, they're abusing, that, that is, that facility is getting, it's, it's old, and, you know, it's, it just takes, it takes a ton of wear, and we increased the fee a couple of years ago, and it didn't have, it hasn't, it's had no impact. It's, can we continue to see, you know, that, that facility just, just look terrible the mornings after these parties? I mean, it's just, it's, it's, it's really sad that folks in our community don't take care of that facility and don't, and don't treat it like it's theirs. I mean, it's just, stuff spilled all over the floors, and we pay a cleaner to come in and do, clean this up, but it's just not, you know, if it constantly is happening over and over again, and the, the wear and tear on that facility, you know, they'll come in and they'll turn the air conditioner down to 50 degrees, and they'll leave it running. I mean, that, that air conditioner, you know, it's old. It just, that kind of wear and tear on it, it's just not good, and the amount of revenue that we bring in, $5,000, $6,000 a year, we're, it's costing us more than that revenue to, that, that facility, because of its age, is just, we're, we're, we're going, we're going backwards if we continue to, to lease that to all these, these events, to the, to the private citizens. I think, you know, so it's our recommendation that we stop doing that, and that we just, you know, use it, similar to what this is, you know, we sort of have discretion over the types of events that will allow to go there. Do you have two volunteer fire departments that have asked for tax rate increases? Southside Volunteer Fire Department has asked for a 5-cent increase from 10 to 15. I know that we, I sent you some information early or late last week with, about those, because I wanted you to have it in advance. Southside did lower their insurance rating from a nine to a five, which is pretty significant, and will have an impact on their, on obviously homeowner's insurance. So, part of that increase for the average owner will, could potentially be mitigated by their deduction and, or their reduction in, in homeowner's insurance, but they're, they're asking for that 10 to 15, and that's just basically so that they can buy new apparatus and, and stay up to, to speed with equipment and other things. And ND Volunteer Fire Department is asking for a 4-cent increase from 6 to 10. And 10's sort of the norm, I would say, that I would say on average, most of ours are at 10. We've got one, I think, at 12, I think Locust or West Stanley Volunteer Fire Department's at 12. at 12. We've got Oakboro still has a fairly low tax rate, but the majority are at 10 cents. And so, moving from 6 to 10 would put them really in the majority. And they, they've financing a new piece of equipment, a new, a new tanker, I believe, and so, they really need this additional revenue to help pay that debt service. I'm also recommending a 2.5% increase for, for the, we give out subsidies to the volunteer fire departments, one for a staffing grant so they can have folks there on a more consistent basis because it's difficult to get volunteers there during the day. And we do a first responder subsidy and we do a fire department subsidy. I'm recommending that each of those subsidies be increased by 2.5% to try to keep up with inflation. So each of the fire departments would see more funding from those three different subsidies. Enterprise funds, I'm recommending a 5% rate increase. It was requested a 5% rate increase. Albemarle's seeking a 6.6% increase in their water and sewer rates. You know, we buy our water and they treat our sewer, so I feel like in order to keep pace with that, you know, several years ago, Albemarle was increasing pretty steadily and we were keeping ours pretty flat, or 1, 2, to 1 or 2%, and we lost a lot of ground. And it really became, we had to, we've had to increase our rates fairly substantially over the last couple of years. And so, I think it's important that if Albemarle's going to go up 6.6%, and Norwood will likely go up a fair amount, they went up a pretty high number last year, and theirs was going to be over a two or three-year period. So I fully expect that their rate increase will be in advance, more than 5% as well. And we do buy some water from Norwood as well. So, and that, that budget includes $240,000 for those recommended 3, 3,000 feet waterman extension program that we talked about, and we'll be coming back to you after the Water and Sewer Authority makes up their mind on where the Phase 4 project will be. So that 5% rate increase would raise our rate to 2418 for the first 2,000 gallons and 1239 for each 1,000 gallons after. The sewer would go to $8.60 per 1,000 gallons, and the wastewater treatment plant for that wholesale rate to Stanfield, Locust, and Oakboro would increase to $5.08 per 1,000. Greater Badens budget would increase by 6.1%, Piney Point, 4.9, Stanley Utilities, 7.1, and the wastewater treatment plant budget would increase by 3.4% based on the recommendation. Our other enterprise funds, the airport and 911, a decrease of 6.6% on the airport side. There were several capital items that they did last year that we've pulled out, but there are some expansion items that power recommended, and you'll see those in the budget. And they're requiring 357,000 appropriation from the general fund to balance their budget. And that's about a $67,000 decrease from the current year. And that includes funding for an airfield data collection software, painting inside the facility and out, and some fence access control system upgrades for the airport, which I feel are really important. That airfield data collection system is really important because that data will help us, from economic development perspective, to be able to better understand how much volume, and it'll have a better market, the airport in terms of what's going on there and the activity. Because right now, we're relying on the tower, and the tower's not always open, tower's not always going on, so there's activity that's happening there that we're missing. And then on the 911 side, a decrease in the 911 fund budget by 16,000. We're not recommending any of that fund balance be appropriated, and 42,000 of that 412 will be used to help offset debt service of our emergency radio system. Just a budget in brief, no tax rate increase recommended for the 13th consecutive year. Significant investment in education and workforce development, 25,000 for additional money for teacher supplements, 1 million in additional reoccurring operational expense funding for the school system, 620,000 in capital outlay funding tied to Articles 40, 42, and 46 above fiscal year 1819. Really, that's a $675,000 in additional one-time, but we're, we're seeing that article, we gave them more in Article 40 and 42 than we are going to bring in this year. And so, that's going to go down slightly next year. So if you offset that decrease, it makes an increase of 620, but really, I'm looking at 675,000 in one-time funding for the school system. 300,000 for the broadband commitment to help them with equipment for broadband that we, we made a $300,000 appropriation last year, I'm recommending an additional 300,000 this year to make good on that commitment. And then another 375,000, which is actually the additional quarter cent sales tax money that we'll get this year in April, May, and June, that we won't actually see until July, June, July, and August. But that money will go into fund balance, and then I'm recommending that be re-appropriated to the school system as part of this budget, as one-time money for capital outlay. And then the 500,000 increase for operational expenditures for Stanley Community College, who is our key workforce development partner. And, you know, we, a lot of our economic development projects wouldn't happen if it wasn't for the community college and everything they do. Additional funding for public safety, ambulance replacement, additional sheriff's deputy for sex offender monitoring, increased sheriff's office patrol vehicle replacement, I'm increasing the number to, that I'm recommending to be, to re-replaced, laptop replacement in all the patrol vehicles, and an additional child protective service worker and social worker for DSS. Continued focus on maintaining our facilities and our technology, and then employment, recruitment, retention, that 2.5% COLA, and additional funding for our paper performance plan for merit. So just a recap of the calendar, June 10 will be the budget public hearing at your regular meeting at 6 o'clock. We'll need to set some times for budget, budget workshops where the board will meet and talk about the budget and changes you may want to see, things you may want to increase, things you may want to decrease. You need to identify those dates at the June 10 meeting because we'll recess that June 10 meeting for those budget workshops. Right now, we're recommending June 13 and June 17 for those, for those recess budget workshops. Typically, those have been about a two-hour meeting where we really focus on just budget. Sometimes we have, we may have some things that didn't get put on the June 10 agenda or didn't, weren't, so we take action on those. But generally, it's all around budget, with a tentative date of adopting this budget on June 20. And I just want to say thank you for your time and attention, and I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have about the recommended budget this evening. And I know it's a lot of information in that booklet, you know, we, between now and June 10 is about roughly a month, and so, staff is at your, we're available to answer any questions you may have about any items in the recommended budget as you begin to review that budget and take a look at it. I'd like to stop there and ask any questions that you all may have about the presentation this evening.
Any questions from commissioners?
Do you have one, Commissioner?
I do.
Okay. Sorry. Mr. Morgan?
Well, that's on my mind. The two part-time positions, where were they for, what departments? One was a part-time for, I don't have my budget book in front of me. You all, they're, they're spelled out in the, in the booklet, in the transmittal letter. One is for 911 to, because of increased call volume, we just need an additional part, permanent part-time position for, for them so that we can make sure that folks can take time off if they need to, but also just to deal with the peak times, and so it's a permanent part-time position. In my memory, I'm trying to think of the other one, it's in, I don't, I didn't bring my booklet. Excuse me?
Dental.
Dental, thank you. Dental, part-time dental position, which is fully funded through, dental doesn't cost the taxpayers a dime in sales tax or property tax. It's solely funded through, you know, Medicaid and health insurance and other things, so that, you know, that position, we are, we are recommending that part-time position as part of the budget process. Thank you, Dave.
Any other questions?
There's a table in the budget that shows all the requested positions and all those I've recommended, both full-time, part-time, and any reclassifications.
All right. No other questions? We appreciate your time, county manager. I think you also have the next item on the agenda. Come back up here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The next item is the 1920 dependent care, health, and dental premium rate approval. And in your packet, you have the recommended bi-weekly rates for health and dental dependent coverage. The health coverage is recommended to increase, the dental will stay the same. And so, that's for your review and consideration for adoption this evening. This will help us move forward with setting up the meetings that all of our staff have with our insurance providers for next year.
Any questions for the county manager?
I do have one.
It's on.
Mr. Lucas, the, looking at the sheet that's been provided, family coverage, 1920 year is 476 every other week, is that correct?
That's accurate, yes, sir. And that, these are based on what Blue Cross and Blue Shield recommends for us, and you got to keep in mind, we have a very robust health insurance plan. Employees do have the option not to cover them on our plan and go through the ACA and then seek additional funding, but to get our plan, I mean, most folks wouldn't be able to purchase our plan on the open market, they wouldn't, it wouldn't be available. And so, you know, that's one of the trade-offs they have, is do you pay for our plan and the lower deductible and the lower copays, or do you, do you go out to the market and price your own and have higher, higher copays, higher deductible, and take that chance? And so, yeah, we're, we had to, we're having to increase these. If we don't increase these, what will end up happening is I'll need to increase the county share, so we'll have to increase what's the county's having to pay because we've, this, this, you know, these rates are set on not only the premium but paying those medical costs that we have, and, you know, dependence drive, part of our medical cost as a self-funded entity. We're responsible for the first, up to, we're recommending that our stop-loss care insurance kick in at 120,000 next year, but right now, it's up to 100,000. So we, we cover the full cost of claims up to 100,000. Once it's 120,000, our stop-loss insurance comes in and pays the rest. But, you know, we've been hit very hard over the last couple of years with lots of claims in excess of the $100,000, which then raises our premium for our stop-loss insurance, which then makes us make compromises of keeping, inching that up to 120,000 as part of this year's budget.
Break, break that down.
Yes, yes.
County manager, it's, the employee-only is still 100% funded by the county, correct?
That's correct, that's correct. So, you know, that, and that's the trade-off and the, you know, sort of way we, you know, we're looking at these rates is, if you, if we don't increase these, then I'm going to have to increase the amount the county's having to put in to cover the employee-only cost because, you know, we got to, we got to pay those claims somewhere.
Thank you, sir.
These rates are still, you know, obviously, we, you know, we try to fund it so that we're covering our cost. You know, we've, we've been using, we had two, this is a separate set of fund balance from the general fund balance. We have a, we have our own health insurance fund, and that has fund balance. You know, three years ago, we were sitting on 2.8 million in fund balance in that fund, and we were able to not adjust rates and do things, but we, that's dwindled down to the point, I think we were at 1.7 million to start this fiscal year, and we're looking at having to spend another half a million dollars out of, out of that fund this year just to balance that budget because our claims are more than what we're, we're spending. So, you know, you're looking at down, getting it down to 1.2 to 1.1 million. Best practice suggests that you have at least two months of claims on hand. We're getting close to hitting that, to getting, getting to that. So it was important that we do raise rates to make sure that we're, our claims are going to be significantly, adequately covered because we can't continue to dip into that fund balance. Because we, if we, if we exhaust that fund balance, then we're having to dip into the general fund, which is, we definitely don't want to do, so.
Any other questions?
Mr. Redd. Have we ever looked at like multiple plans? I know different companies, some will have like higher deductibles for like dependents or, or family plans to help lower that cost, but then they take more responsibility, obviously.
We haven't looked at that as, we've, we've looked at it across the county as, you know, do we want to look at offering county employees a couple of different plans? Do we offer them a, you know, they can, they can continue to get their health insurance paid for free, the premiums, not the copays and deductibles, obviously, if they choose this level of plan, which has a higher deductible and has a higher copays. If they want a more robust, rich plan, then we would, you know, you'd, they had to pay something, and so the county employee would have to pay it. You could do the same thing with dependents, so it is something we can, we certainly can look at, we just haven't done it yet because we've had a good fund balance and we've, you know, we want to try to, to be honest with you, our health insurance has been, has been a recruiting factor because our salaries are a little lower than counties around us. So the, the robust nature of our health insurance plan has always been something that employees, you know, really appreciate. So we've tried not to push any changes to that or any cost to the employee. Because the thing to keep in mind is that we also have a lot of employees who don't have dependents. And so, if, if you don't raise these rates and you put more pressure on the employee that doesn't have dependents, you're, it's really unfair to them. So we're trying to strike the balance is all, but that is something we can look at. We haven't because we're trying not to push those changes to our employees and make their benefits any less because we do, it is tough for us to compete against the, the unions and the cabarras and the McCoors for talent because our salaries are lower. And it's just, you know, we're never going to be able to compete, it won't happen. Those, those, those places have a higher tax base and they, so, one of the things we've been able to do is offer a good health insurance benefit, so we've tried not to make changes, but it's something we're going to, may have to look at in the future, yes.
Any other questions? If not, what's the pleasure of the board this evening?
I'm at, the motion that we adopt the recommended bi-weekly health and dental insurance premium rates for, you know, employees and employee dependent care for 2019, 2020.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan to accept the recommendation, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr, is any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries 6 to 0. Item number eight on the agenda is a resolution seeking high water levels and less fluctuation in water levels for Lake Tillery. I believe this is going to be the county manager.
Yeah, I don't think it has a landing place in any specific department, so I'll, I'll take the lead on this. This is actually something that we were, when Bill and I were in Raleigh last, Tuesday? Wednesday? Sorry, yeah, Wednesday. Last Wednesday, there was some conversation with each of our, members of our legislative delegation about this issue, about lake levels in Tillery. It's my understanding that our elected officials at the state level are getting a lot of pressure from, from constituents that live on the lake and about the lake levels and how they're being managed, and the notice that they're receiving, the amount of stumps and other debris that's being pulled into the lake because they are bringing it up and down at such a frequent rate. And so, they asked us to consider a resolution to help them in their conversations with folks at Duke, in the, in the corporate structure of Duke as they have these meetings. So, they asked for this resolution, I put it together, certainly the board wants to make changes to that or add, staff will be more than happy to do that.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Morgan?
I guess this is more of a statement. I mean, I've always had concerns about their water levels, and I was just pulling up here, there was an article this week that come out about the, this very reason why they're doing these flow releases, and a lot of it has to do with this new recreational policy, and it's for the downstream counties now that kayaking and everything has gotten so big, so they're doing at least six this summer. It has the dates, it's all mainly on Saturdays of all places, but it's to help all the downstream, but it hurts us as a county. So I'm all in favor of this because I don't want our lake to end up like Lake Norman where at times you can't even get on Lake Norman. But I don't know how this will affect those recreational.
I'll just say that those recreational items were built into their FERC license. I know Richmond County and Anson County both intervened in that relicensing process to get more flows for kayaking and other things along that stretch of the, of the Rocky River before they get to Blue It. So some of that, you know, is, is within FERC, and so it may require us to take, you know, if this doesn't work, you know, it may require us to intervene again at FERC around the lake levels and issues. And so, you know, that's certainly something that you can always do, you can always intervene at FERC. Obviously, there's a legal cost to that, but that's, that is something you have the ability to do, but that is part of their licenses to, to increase their flows for recreational use, so you're absolutely correct.
Mr. Chairman, a comment to make about the lake levels, I live on the lake and I see it every day. My concern is, I can get my boat out, but my concern, my real concern is the recreation skiers, tubers, there's so much debris in that water because they're raising it up after it's after it's been lowered by two-plus feet, and all it's doing is washing the debris back into the water. And my, a couple of my grandkids were tubing last Friday, and I, before they went out, I told them, I said, "Y'all be careful out there because some of these laps, tree laps, can just barely be under the water." And all it's going to take, and it's going to happen, for some kid or some skier to hit one of these laps and either get hurt seriously or either killed, which I hope that does not happen, but it really concerns me with recreation that's going on in our lakes and the debris that's out there because of the levels.
I share Commissioner Lawhan's concerns. I think my question would be, is the lake level fluctuation responsible for that or the sheer number of storms and two major hurricanes that we had last fall responsible for that? I think that would be my concern with, yeah, I mean...
I think both could create it, but I do know that when they raise the water level, that debris, debris constantly falling off trees, which back into the water.
Is this a concern on any of our other lakes? Would be my second question.
We haven't heard, we didn't hear from, the legislative delegation did not say anything
about Baden or Tucker Town, they just specifically mentioned Tillery. I think that's where, and you also have, you know, a hard, a large number of landowners around Tillery, more so than Tucker Town, obviously, with none, and there are, you do have some on the Baden, Baden Lake, but more of those tend to be on the Montgomery County side than the Stanley County side. We didn't hear anything with relation to Baden Lake or Tucker Town as, in the request for a resolution.
And I'm aware that Duke Power is going to meet at the Norwood Town Commission Meeting, I think on May the 20th, to talk about lake levels. Lake property owners have been encouraged to come and show up for that meeting or anybody else that's concerned about it. We don't have a meeting that night, good.
I just, like, I was just bringing that article up. I think if they're going to do these releases, why are they doing them on Saturdays? They're going to do 11 between May and September 7th, and they're doing them on holiday weekends. They're doing it on Memorial Day, May 25th is their release date, July 6th is their release date, and September 7th, which I think is around Labor Day. So, I mean, why are they doing it on our busiest holiday weekends for lake traffic? I mean, because you're going to get in some of these back coves where, where the water level is normally good, where you tube because you get off the main level and that water drops, and Commissioner Lawhan's right, you're going to hit some stumps or a log.
Any other questions or comments? What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution and send it to our state representative.
Motion by Commissioner Lawhan, second by Commissioner Morgan, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Item number nine is a contract amendment to a contract we approved last meeting, two meetings ago, with the town of Baden. I'll let County Manager Lucas speak to this.
Yeah, this was entered into actually the 18th of March, and they're just seeking to extend this through, actually, at this point, through May 31st of 2019. It wouldn't surprise me if we are back at the June 10th meeting, based on some conversations I've had with the sheriff that they're, in terms of their progress. So, it wouldn't be surprised, I wouldn't be surprised if we have to take action on this again before the end of the fiscal year, but this is just simply to extend that, that contract beyond the initial date.
Any questions? I think mine would be if this terminates on May 31st, we can't take action until June 10th, who's providing law enforcement services?
We would likely have to call a special meeting and to do it, to extend it again, or we could just go ahead and strike the May 31st. I would, I mean, I would likely, if, the worst thing that can happen is they can, they could have a replacement in place before June 10th, but I would, it may be, it may be prudent to just go ahead and strike the May 31st and change it to June 10th. That way, if we do need, if they do need coverage through June 10th, it's there, and if they don't, then, you know, they won't, they won't use it. Obviously, they're not going to spend money if they don't need to, so. So, I would maybe, I would, I would make the recommendation that you actually strike May 31st and change that to the June 10th, 2019.
Is there objection to that from anybody? Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the amendment as amended? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Item number 10 on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. It is a fairly lengthy one. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? If not, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Lawhan to accept the consent agenda, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. That brings us to public comment. Let's see, Tripp Crosby, I think he left, he was here for the rezoning. Ms. Belk, are you still here?
Yes.
Reminder, we have a three-minute limit for speakers, and we appreciate you coming tonight.
All right, well, thank you. Well, my name is Melissa Belk, I am a teacher here in Stanley County. I've been teaching for about 20 years now. I taught at Parker Edge, which was private school for a while and came back to public school. In regards to the budget that was presented by Stanley County Schools, there are many teachers who are working second jobs, who have small children, who have schoolwork to do, who cannot be at these kind of meetings, but while I cannot speak for everybody, I do speak for a large majority of the teachers because I am also president of the NCAE unit here in Stanley County. So, we appreciate, we appreciate the monies that you've added into the budget. We know that what was asked for was a tremendous amount, whether out of political politeness, I'm from the north, or your southern hospitality and politeness, I'm not sure which. I'm not, I was never really sure why Stanley County Schools kind of got itself into the situation that it was in. It seemed to always underfund itself. Not sure why, but I do know that the people I'm looking at right now are the people who are capable and willing to make the difference. I know that industry coming into Stanley County is very important. I know that education is a top priority for those looking at our county, and I just thank you and hope and pray that we can continue to move forward, to continue to make Stanley County a great place to work, to teach, to raise our families, and to become, I don't know, more valued even within the state. Maybe we could be the example of the way to do things right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belk. I don't typically engage, but I do have one question, Ms. Belk. How many members of, how many teachers are members of NCAE locally?
Before I answer that question, in the past 10 years, I think I've been involved with it, I've been involved with membership, I've seen a tremendous decline in our membership. Number one, due to retirement. Number two, we have lost a lot of members to surrounding counties because they can make more money, and so we're right at 100, 100 members right now. The idea of being, I come from coal country in West Virginia, so being a part of a union or a local or an organization kind of is maybe that old-school way of thinking that some of the younger generation are just now coming to see a collective voice, so with the, with the marches and things that they've had, I think the younger generation are seeing that having a voice is a good thing. So, about 100 members, it kind of changes with transfers and moves of teachers.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, you're welcome.
Board comments and announcements, committee reports, if you have them, we'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Lawhan.
A report on new home permits issued, and this is very impressive, tells you how strong our economy is locally. In April 2019, a total of 68 new home permits were issued totaling $8,765,000 in value compared to April of 2018, 23 permits. So, I was blown away when I got the number of 68 in one month. January through April 2019, a total of 157 have been issued, same period in 2018, 87. So, new homes are being built in Stanley County.
Commissioner Jordan?
Mr. Barbie? I don't have the numbers handy, but I know this is more related to the schools than it is the county commissioner, but this little, small county, I think, had six high school teams in various different sports advancing on to the state playoffs, and I think at least three of them are still going strong. Congratulations to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Fur? Mr. Morgan?
I just got two things. One is the airport, I guess, we had our airfield testing done at the field to basically see what the runways can withhold. That was supposed to done, be done last fall, but due to the hurricanes, the unit that did it was based in Florida where, so they were just now able to get to us, so we hope to have the reports by October, and that'll give us a lot of information for the C-17s on the weights, what, when, and if, what they're able to bring in based off temperatures and everything, so that'll be a good thing. They're hoping to have it, that report done by October, so be something good to have in the future. And I like, I got to go last, was it last Thursday or two weeks ago, went to the Officer Jeff Shelton, Thin Blue Line dinner, and saw a lot of our sheriff employees, got, won some awards, got some great recognition, so hats off to those guys out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. Just a few things for me. I know Commissioner Lawhan, myself, County Manager Lucas are all planning to attend economic development kind of retreat function. The legislative reception in Raleigh coming up, I believe that's next week. I know RPO's coming up, that's, it's a busy couple of weeks coming up for almost all our committees. I know that's why most of us don't have reports because they're coming up in the next two weeks. So, economic development and all that's meeting tomorrow, and so, busy week, busy week, but I appreciate all of y'all coming out and hearing the budget presentation tonight. I know that's why several of you were here. Appreciate you waiting. It will be online, like County Manager said, tomorrow morning. If you need copies of it, it's also available at libraries and here at the county office. But, if there is nothing else, there is something else. It's my fault, we forgot to approve the closed session minutes from last meeting. If you guys would turn those into Tyler and let her reissue those in our next agenda packet, we'll approve those at our next meeting. Sorry about that, but if not, we'll seek a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Jordan, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero.